Okay, I call to order the June 14th Committee of the Whole Meeting. Fledge allegiance, please, and a moment of silence. I apologize for going a little out of order. We should have done a roll call first, but if we could do a roll call now, that would be great.
Ms. Nyman.
Here.
Mr. Panarello.
Here.
Mr. Uptegrove.
Here.
Mr. Zawada.
Here.
Mrs. Scott.
Here.
Ms. Deroff.
Present.
Mr. Hemingway.
Here.
Mrs. Hogan.
Present.
Mr. Brophy.
Here.
All present.
Okay, we did just have an executive session. It lasted 50 minutes, and it was in accordance to
Act 43?
Act 43. It was a security update. It's gonna bring us, it'll bring us to public comment period number one. I would imagine we have some sign-ups for that. Okay, in the meantime, my mom's calling. Public comment period number one is limited to topics on tonight's agenda. Participants must preface their comments by an announcement. I don't know, we still don't have a name and address. We would ask, you don't have to, but we ask that you state your name, address, or group affiliation if this is appropriate. All statements, inquiries, and comments shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually, administrative team members individually, school employees, or members of the public individually. Note that we value and will not compromise the privacy of our students and staff. Please, please see us outside the realm of the public meeting if you have a concern about an individual staff member or student. If your public comment includes a question, Ms. Torsha or a member of her staff will be in contact with you to confirm your question and provide you with information. Comments are limited to three minutes, and comment periods are limited to 30 minutes. Individuals may indicate a desire to speak a second time if there is time left in the 30-minute period. Finally, note that we do record our board and committee meetings, and we post them on YouTube with a link on our website. We request that if you do wish to take pictures or record the meeting yourself, you do so in a non-disruptive and discreet manner, and use those materials respectfully and responsibly. Thank you. Okay, it looks, so far from my sheet, two to sign up. Were there any additional? Okay, we have two signed previously. Thank you for that. Mr. Amy and Ms. U. Savage. So, Mr. Amy first.
John Amy, New Hanover Township. Last time I spoke, I'm not sure I made it clear who and what I found to be the main problems with the budget process the last two years. In my mind, the problem's twofold. Budgeting's precisely backwards here. The school board, that isn't, the second point is the school board isn't doing the one job that's clearly spelled out in the state code. The first point, you become fiscally responsible by setting clear educational goals, making a sound plan, and only then do you budget sensibly to achieve it. We always start with the money first and work backwards. Notice after, with two weeks to go before approval, we still don't have a long-term projection. Our plan, based on the paltry budget meeting presentation we get, seems to be to maintain programs and spend what we can afford, whatever that means. Well, what that looks like on the ground is that a quarter of all elementary classes are gonna be at 25 or more students this year, and a couple of our Title I schools are gonna have class sizes of 30, 28. High-achieving students are fighting to get one AP Science class, even though there was high demand for two others, but the interest in reaching the magic number of 20. To try and compensate, there was a teacher that was asked to teach one of the courses virtually only, asked after hours, and after they taught a whole day in person. High achievers in English being told to take a study hall instead of a second section of ELA. Now, I've heard the claim, and some of the parents who asked about this have heard the claim, that budgets didn't cause these. Of course budgets caused these. All these were resource decisions. There's nothing magical about the thresholds we set. Someone decided they're what we can afford. If this is fiscal responsibility, if this is what we call making Boyertown better than Mr. President last week, you're right. I hate it because it's a raw deal for the students. On the second point, maybe the board doesn't understand this, but by law, state law, setting the budget's your accountability, not the administration's. You should work collaborative with the administration, and they should advise you, but in the end of the day, they're only advocates. You're the one that set the budget and the educational strategy. You lead. Only they can advise and consent, or advise and advocate. Your Board of Education, ask the hard questions. Don't get mad at me for asking them.
30 seconds?
Thank you. Ms. U. Savage?
I'd like to begin tonight with an apology to our superintendent and other members of administration that I may have offended with my comments on May 24th. The accusations about how the board and administration are working to create the budget were clearly offensive and over the line. I must not confuse my right to free speech with what is right and appropriate. I apologize, and can only hope and pray that my apology will be accepted. I do maintain my concern, however, that the board is not being fiscally responsible in their work on the 2022-23 budget. The board is fully accountable for the budget, and you are making this decision based on very little information. It appears that the information you have asked for has not been provided, and the approved budget will affect not only the upcoming school year, but also many years into the future. To my knowledge, you have not yet seen five-year projections for what impact your decisions for next year's budget may have beyond the next year. This is especially important because of the big chunk you are taking from the fund balance, also known as the district, our district's savings account, in order to keep your taxes lower, coupled with big unknowns like the teacher's contract and inflation. When I spoke with your board president after the May 24th meeting three weeks ago, he said, he stated that he has seen the five-year projections, but the rest of the board hadn't seen them yet because they're not official, whatever that means. Has the rest of the board seen them yet? And if not, why not? And even if you get them at this point, there's very little you can do to modify the drafted budget without putting the state-mandated approval deadline in jeopardy. Let me be, let me be clear. I am not saying that the 3% tax increase you are targeting is wrong. I don't know if it's too high or too low, but my point is, neither do you. I do know what fiscal responsibility is. It is the hard task of balancing what our taxpayers can afford with what is needed to sustain a, to support a sustainable, high-quality education for our students. It ensures that we can fulfill our district mission, which quote, "is cultivating an exceptional, innovative learning community that enables all students to succeed in a changing world, now and into the future." It is a long-term view, and it is essential to creating a better, stronger, more prosperous school district for the next generation today. The choices you make today, or fail to make, will determine what kind of education our children and grandchildren inherit 20 and 40 years from now, and ultimately, what kind of community we live in in the future. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening.
Okay, we're gonna move on to approval of the minutes. Can I have approval of the May 24th, 2022 Board of School Directors Meeting minutes?
Deroff moves.
Zawada, seconds.
I saw Mr. Uptegrove, and a second by Ms. Deroff. Any discussion, questions? If not, we're gonna go vote.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Mr. Uptegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Deroff.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, Ms. Torsha, I'm gonna hand this over to you.
Great, and I believe that Jared, are you out in the audience? Jared, would you stand, please, so everybody can just kind of focus on you for a moment? It is my pleasure to, tonight, to recognize our first of its kind for Boyertown Area School District. I'm proud to welcome Jared Drebek, a recent graduate with the BASH class of 2020 and the Montgomery County Community College class of 20, I'm sorry, 2022, of BASH class of 2022, and Montgomery County Community College class of 2022. In fact, Jared graduated from Montgomery County Community College before he graduated from BASH. Is that correct? When was your graduation from Montgomery County Community College?
May 13th, 19th.
May 19th. Wonderful. So Jared is the first Boyertown Area School District student to graduate with his Associate's Degree in Business Administration before he graduated from high school. This was made possible through the dual enrollment program that Boyertown has with Montgomery County Community College. Jared took college classes online while managing his full high school class load. He joined Phi Theta Kappa MCC's National Honor Society during the second semester. Their May 13th commencement exercises, Jared graduated summa cum laude. Congratulations. Jared's mom, Jared's mom is a computer science senior lecturer at Monco. She and Jared are both here this evening, so thank you, Mrs. Drebek, for being here as well. Would you, well, we have you both standing, and I would love to hear anything from either of you. Do you have any, any words that you'd like to share? Mom, son? Why don't you step over to the podium, and then you can have a microphone. There you go. I'm happy to turn, I'm happy to turn mine off, and you can share with us your experience.
Yeah, so I basically decided, actually from a recommendation of my math teacher in 10th grade. Ironically, I was not doing the best in her class, but she saw something, then she decided, it was just like, hey, you should try take a business class since you're interested at Monco, so I, I decided to in, I wanna say, spring of 2020, right before COVID. So I really only had like three actual in-person classes, and the rest was all online, which was actually really nice to be able to balance a schedule because I was heavily involved, I am in music programs, marching band, the musical. Obviously, my, my senior year, I did the internship program and was in the hall and everything. So I was definitely busy, and being able to do stuff online was really cool. All my teachers here at BASH who teach the dual enrollment stuff, didn't really know that was a huge thing until I started taking classes at Monco, and I believe is Mrs. Gallagher is the person in charge for counseling, who really talked us through and kind of set up a plan, because the whole goal was to kind of graduate high school and Monco, hopefully, and then be able to start real college, I guess you could call it. Yeah, real college sounds bad, but, a four-year college, sorry. Yeah, continue, I guess.
And where are you, where are you planning to attend?
I am attending Syracuse University, and I'm, I'm continuing in business, but I'm also adding another, I'm doing two majors in communications and business. So, yeah, and that's really only possible through the whole dual enrollment stuff and taking classes both, so it was, it was very neat. Yeah. Any questions? Sorry, I'm not really
Any questions for Jared?
Prepared.
Well, we wanted to celebrate you. The articles that were in the newspaper were wonderful, and we certainly couldn't let this go by, our first time ever. And so thank you for coming in on a summer school, you know, non-school day during your summer break, and we wish you nothing but the utmost great experience. Best of luck. We're always here as a resource, standing, sitting right behind you is our communication specialist, so if you ever need someone to tap into their knowledge, I know that Mrs. Moore would be more than happy to help you out in any way. So congratulations, best of luck, and are you sure, Mom, nothing else to add? Nothing? Okay, all right. Oh, Mrs. Deroff has something to share.
I want you to come back and let us know how you're doing next year.
Of course, of course.
Be nice to follow you. Thank you.
Jared, thank you. It's, your success is an inspiration. The fact that you did this and been so outgoing about letting us know has raised some conversations in the, in the district about the program and what can be leveraged from it. So thank you again for showing it can be done. Thank you for doing it successfully, and good luck in Syracuse. Heard a good football team up there sometimes. I'm not too sure how that works.
Get a worm coat.
Get a worm coat.
Congratulations, and thank you again for joining us, and if you would not like to stay for the entire meeting, you certainly may leave at any time that's good for you and your family. Oh, okay, wonderful. Well, thank you, and thank you. Okay, next, I know that I am going to mess up this name, but I am pleased to introduce Amy Muzapapa. Great, she is the Executive Director of the Foundation for Boyertown Education. Amy, oh, there you are. And Amy replaces Tessie Melkier, who announced her retirement earlier this year. And according to Rod Martin, the foundation's vice president, Mrs. Muzapapa brings a focus on collaboration, community relations, and donorship that have been the cornerstone of the nonprofit's success. She also comes with a renewed focus on communications and a strong desire to increase the foundation's media presence. Mostly, most recently, she served as the Creative Director of Muzo Media Productions, providing brand management services to small businesses, nonprofits, and civic groups. Mrs. Muzapapa has been a, say that fast, like 10 times, has been a resident of Boyertown Area School District for more than nine years, is a parent within the district, and brings decades of nonprofit volunteerism and service with her as she joins the team. She will be joining us at an upcoming meeting to provide an update on the foundation, and we look forward to that and to working together, and welcome aboard, and best wishes, and I'm pleased, if you have a few words to share, please do so.
Thank you so much. It's nice to meet everyone. I am a resident of Earl Township. I have two children in the district. One, my daughter's going into fifth grade next year, and my son will be starting at Earl Elementary.
Oh, thanks. Rookie mistake. My son will be starting at Earl Elementary, so we're very excited. And hearing stories such as Jared's, you know, there are things about the school district that I thought I knew, and now I'm seeing them with a different focus through the role with the foundation. And so I look forward to getting to know more about the programs and seeing ways that the foundation can support and enhance them. So, thank you. Thank you for joining us. Thank you.
Before we get on to the next presentation, I was gonna say something after Jared and congratulate him, but we have another special student that graduated in 2022, and his name is Jaden Miller. Some of us know him from the track team. Okay, he actually just broke a record that stood for 50 years with the track team, but he's been accepted to go to West Point, which is one of the highest accomplishments you can do in high school. It's one of the toughest schools to get into, and the people that they turn out are amazing. So this young man's giving up 10 years of his life in the beginning to serve our country, and he will become out a great gentleman. The best people I ever hired were from the military. Basically, he's from a military family. His father's in the service, and he has two brothers that are in the service, so he's following their footprint. But for those that don't realize, to get to West Point, you need two senators to endorse you with a letter, personally met, a federal senator, not a local senator. And like I said, I can't, I just feel that it was something that was necessary, that we should have brought up, and it's something that shows again what the school district can do and has performed, and this administration has done, as well as our teachers especially. So if we can all congratulate Jaden, that would be great. He was gonna be here tonight, but he got a late graduation present from an uncle, and he's down at the concert for Train tonight, so he felt that was a little more important, so, but I want to thank Jaden and his family for everything that they are doing and for their service.
All right, next, we have a presentation being put on for us by Mr. Jeff Hawes and Mr. David Feit, our IT people, and this is with regard to the cable that is getting laid between school buildings in our school district.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening. As Mrs. Torsha introduced me, I've also been your acting IT director up until the hiring of Mr. Feit a couple months ago. So this is a project that we began quite some time ago, and I'm just trying to stay on board to get it wrapped up. But my hope here is to give you a little bit of an explanation as to what it is, where we're at, and why we're doing it. So the first thing, just so that we, when I use the word WAN, or I say WAN, it stands for Wide Area Network. So conceptually, a wide-area network connects multiple building, local networks, which allows us to share resources, connectivity, servers, applications, things like that. So it's a way to cost-effectively share services. WAN providers, including Vero Networks, that are constructing the Boyertown WAN, are typically considered utility companies, similar to your water, gas, and electric. So there's obviously a process to go, to go through the local townships, get permits, and then to run the fiber lines between our buildings. So the big question, and I've been hearing a little bit of this recently, is, you know, so why are we doing this? So many reasons, but I tried to summarize in a couple different areas. So first, the cost savings to the district will be about $34,000 a year for the duration of the contract. The speed increase or capacity increase to our buildings will be going from a 1-gig connection to a 10-gig connection at nine of our buildings. Two of them already had it, because those were hub sites to the district, so a 10x improvement in capacity and speed. And then the last one is kind of all related, so visibility, resilience, and redundancy. So fancy words, what do they mean? So on the visibility side, we inside the IT Department of the district will have visibility to any network issues between buildings, so we'll be the first alerted. Instead of somebody saying, hey, the internet's down in my building, which is how everybody perceives it, we should be getting those alerts first, because it's our equipment, it's lines that we're leasing for this WAN project. So we'll be the first people to know there's a problem. The resilience side of it is in the design and the RFP that we put out. So we will have two hub sites at West and at the high school, meaning each of those sites can survive without the other currently, and I think you guys unfortunately experienced this at least once last summer. When there's an outage, depending on the type of outage, it can take the whole district down. Our goal is to constantly improve that, because while it's terrible if a building goes down, it's worse if 11 buildings go down. So the resilience side of it with this new design will allow both of those locations, those hub sites, to provide some of the services. Not everything will be redundant, but there will be some resiliency there, and, sorry, the redundancy's kind of right in there, right? So we have backups, and we have an internet connection at each location, so if the internet goes down at the high school, West could pick up that load, probably a 10-minute downtime instead of a full day or more. So those are really the primary reasons. Additionally, not listed on here, a contract was up that we had, so we had to make decisions. We had to go out for an RFP, and we went through that process and really tried to figure out what do we need for the district long term, and that's, that's what we put out to bid. So the current status, so to give you some timeline, I would love to say that this stuff only takes a month or two. Unfortunately, it's closer to a year. So in the September to December timeframe, we went through developing the RFP, and then we got bid responses to that RFP and went through an evaluation process, which is not strictly on cost. Each person that submits a bid first has to, we first look at costs and take the lowest provider and make sure that they provide a qualified bid. If I come in and say, hey, I'll do it for 10 bucks, that sounds like a great deal, except maybe I don't have the tools, ability, or capacity to do that. So we have to go through and make sure they're gonna meet all the requirements, and that the responses meet all the requirements of that RFP. Then in January, we brought that to the board, and the board approved the contract with Vero, which was the winning bidder. That was signed in that month, and then in February, we began the engineering and field verification. So the difference in that, the engineering can happen using Google Maps, and I'll say somewhat minimal information. People can sort of survey the area and figure out, based on our suggestions and their own, their own engineering, where they think it's going to happen. The field verification is actually having people come out, visit our buildings, draw up more detailed, detailed plans to ensure that, you know, the closets are where we think they are in the buildings, there's not, you know, a new tree or building or something in the way that wasn't visible. So we go through that step, and I say "we," meaning the company that actually wins it, Vero, is going through that step. We're obviously in communications and assisting, but it's really they're driving it at that point. They were the winner. Then in the March-April time period, it goes out to permit submissions. So that's, quite honestly, I don't know how many townships and boroughs there are. I know there are many, because there were many different places they had to put permits in with. So that happened in the March-April time period. Construction began towards the middle of May, and will continue probably through the end of July. There's a lot of variations to that, that schedule, but at this point, we're thinking by the end of July, we should be done or nearly done. In the July time period, we'll also be then working on our equipment, our side of it. So they run the lines into the building. We have to be ready to accept those lines and have everything configured. So the network configuration is done inside the district, and then the plan in August is to go live, where we will transition from our current service provider to the new provider, which is Vero. Assuming all that goes well, as expected, then we cancel our contract with the current provider. That's too far away for me to read, but it is a flyer that we, we put together after about the first week. So when there is construction that is going on in residential areas, this flyer, and there's a little more to it that's cut off, but this flyer is given out to any residents if there's expectation of any kind of disturbance, digging, things like that. It shows three pictures of kind of what can happen. So equipment shows up, they dig a small hole, they're essentially burrowing under the ground, if all goes well, it pops out 1,000 feet away, and they put that little box in that you see in the right-hand picture. And the last slide gives you a bit more of a conceptual drawing, and I probably should have mentioned this as one of the, another positive of this project. So this is actually the, the line, the fiber network that's being built through Boyertown, connecting all of our buildings. There's a little blow-up there of in-town in Boyertown, and it shows some of the progress. So it's a little bit simplified, but all, all the permits are submitted. I think it's about 70% received, and about 30% of the construction is complete. So one of the benefits to this type of a design, if there's a problem in the area, which there will be, I don't know what it'll be, what'll cause it, squirrel could chew a line, could be a traffic accident, a pole goes down, lightning strikes, storms, any number of things can happen, but the network is contained within the district. A lot of service provider networks, if it's considered a lit solution, as is our current, it runs all the way back to Ephrata, or Denver, PA. So instead of having, I'll say, 10, 12 miles, you know, of a span, you could have 50 or 60 miles, which just increases the risk in terms of an outage. And we don't have control over anything when it leaves Boyertown. So again, that gives you a very high level of what's being designed. So that's all the slides I have. I'm happy to take questions or concerns. I know there have been a few. I'm more than happy to answer.
So we, I'm sorry, I, so will be completed and done testing prior to start of school for the 2022 start, correct?
Yes, that is, the expectation is that we're done in early August. We do have a month-to-month contract with our current provider, so there is little to no risk that we would be without internet or without network connections between our buildings, just as we have today.
Okay, so one gets done before, before the cut goes away, so we still have, we'll still have internet service no matter which. Okay.
Exactly. Yep, yeah, so that's why the last step in that timeline is really, once we're confident everything's up and running, then we reach out to our current provider and cancel our service. We only need a two-week lead time for that.
Okay, I have lots of questions and concerns, because I've been hearing a lot of complaints. So you're saying everybody, every municipality gave you a permit?
Okay, just first off, they didn't give it to me. They gave it to Vero or the contractor, but yes, yeah, there are permits required for the work if there's any disturbances, so unless it's on school property. If it's on school property, they're not, we don't need a permit.
Right, okay. So I have a concern there, but that's okay. I heard some underground lines were hit, so did we do the PA-1 call?
Yeah, so the only, so the PA-1 call's required anytime there's digging. That's standard operating procedure for any utility company, even if you're putting a patio in, quite honestly, or porch or anything like that, PA-1 call's required. That was done. And it's done at each step or each phase when it's done. Utility companies are then required to come out and mark. If they don't mark, or if they mark incorrectly, then things happen. I only am aware of one service line hit to one home, and it was corrected within about 30 minutes.
Okay, and you said you did put out flyers, but Okay, and you said you did put out flyers, but I'm hearing people were not aware of this going in, and when they came home from work, there was digging going on and disruption of their property.
Yeah, I can say, so the first complaint we got on the digging is when the flyer was developed. And quite honestly, that was, that was why that it was developed. It wasn't expected to be any disturbances because it is a very small, I'll say it's a very small area that they dig. Typically, there's no problem. It's when they hit rock that it gets quite disturbed, and I'm aware of, again, two homes, one intersection where there was some issues, and that really is what spawned the development of that flyer. I also drove by, if we're speaking of the same areas, I drove by those areas. They've been restored, straws down, grass is planted, much better than they were initially. And those family, I'm sorry, the residents were contacted and everything was worked out with them.
Well.
At least the ones I know of.
Burke Street, I heard, is not happy because nobody told them about it. There were no signs posted for their cars to be moved so that they could get their equipment in, so their cars may have been there. The residents could have moved flowers or foliage or whatever, but now they're damaged or they're ripped out or whatever. Sidewalks have been tampered with, places that they compacted the ground, it's so hard they can't even plant anything there. So there's people on Burke Street that are not happy.
Okay, if you have specifics, I'll be glad to take them after the meeting, and we can, I'll personally drive by, and we can look into what the issues are or may be. Again, the ones that I know of, we've had a total of five complaints since the project started. All five have been contacted, actually even earlier today. I'm not sure the address, I apologize. But all five, at this point, of the residents understood that people were coming back to restore it. That's part of the construction project.
And walkways that were destroyed.
Any sidewalk, yeah, any sidewalk, if they, their goal, both from a, I'll say, both from a monetary as well as an ease perspective, is to not go through streets or sidewalks. They prefer to go in the space in between. So they'll go in the grass along the curb and then pop out somewhere else along the curb. Again, if they hit rocks in other areas, then sometimes they do have to take out a section of sidewalk, and then they're required to restore that to at least the same condition. In the case of sidewalk, they would pour a new section.
Okay, I will talk to you after the meeting.
Yeah, absolutely. Or, I don't know if I'll be here the entire meeting, but you're welcome to submit the information to Sandy.
If you're going to leave, let me know, and I'll quick.
That's fine.
Walk out with you.
Absolutely. Yep.
Yeah, I just have a quick question because I wasn't aware that there were issues, so it's just really a clarifying question. Were we digging on residents' properties without informing them first? Or was this more like on the public area near their properties?
Right, so it's a public right-of-way. So most of us mow the grass right up to our curbs.
Yeah.
We mow around our sidewalks and other things that may be there. Just as you may see a cable or a telephone boxes are more common, you'll see those little pedestals. It's the same concept. It's a public right-of-way. So once the permits are approved, they have the ability to go there. They don't need to ask permission.
But I mean.
I agree that it is the right thing to do is to inform them, but it, again, it's not required. But that is what's happening now, is they're supposed to be informing the residents if they're going to be on their properties.
Who, who's, you're saying it's not a requirement, but if we, whose job would it be to inform the residents? Was that the Vero's job or the district's job?
Um, are you asking legally or ethically?
Responsibility.
I believe it's the responsibility of the people that are doing the work so that we're not following them around. And that's, those are the people that we've been having the discussions on that they need to improve in that area. It's my understanding that they have. Again, if there's specifics, I'm happy to follow up and make sure that we make contact with those residents. Because in some cases, they started the project and they may be coming back a week later. So they're not going to plant grass and put sod down or anything like that if they're going to come back to finish the work. But again, without specifics, I can't really tell you.
Right, I just feel that anybody who's doing work on behalf of the district where they're disturbing residents' properties really needs to make sure they're communicating with the residents.
I agree with you.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep.
First of all, I have no idea what you're talking about.
That's okay.
So this might seem like a weird question, but someone in the community called me. You're putting in single mode?
Yes.
And the question was, and single strand fiber? So the question I got was, why aren't we using four or eight strand?
That is a very technical question and impressive. So it is, it is single-mode fiber, which essentially.
I break down everything.
So single-mode fiber, at this point, has only theoretical limits on distance. It's really, we haven't really hit what that distance is. It comes down to the affordability of equipment. So it is single-mode. It is not single-strand.
Okay.
I don't know the exact strand count. It would have to be at least 22, but it is probably more than that. Because in the end, the company, Vero, owns and maintains that fiber. If another business, school entity in the area wanted to sign up for some type of service, they could potentially lease portions of that as well.
So since we're using single, would the need ever in the foreseeable future rise for four or eight?
Yeah, so again, single-mode is the type. It's not a count. It sounds like it's one. It's not the count. So single-mode is the type of fiber. I believe it's at least 32 count. It's probably more than that because the expense is in all of what's happening in the labor. The fiber wall is pricey for you and I. It's not actually expensive for the project. So they're probably putting in something much larger than that, and we should not outgrow what they're putting in any time in my lifetime.
Okay.
Or, well, I guess it depends how long I live.
It might in mine. The other question I had was, you said for the length of the contract, and I'm sure we know how long that is, but how long is that?
It is a 10-year contract.
10 years?
Yeah.
And so we should save $34,000 a year?
Correct.
So what was the total cost? In other words, how much?
The total cost of the Vero contract is roughly $2 million. It's a little under $2 million over that 10 years.
Okay.
And I can only tell you what our current provider costs and what we'll be saving the year after, you know, the first year that we're on the new system. Anyone's guess where it would be eight years from now, but as everything, I think costs typically only go up. So the good news is, we have a 10-year defined contract. Our cost for that piece of it cannot change during the 10 years, and we have an option to extend.
So if anybody wanted to use that line, we wouldn't get the money, they would. The company, Vero.
Correct, yes. If somebody else happened to have buildings in a similar pattern and it made sense, again, not knowing the area super well, but I'm guessing there could be a business that has two or three locations. If they want to do something like this, it could potentially benefit them as well. We've seen that in other towns and cities that we've done projects like this.
Okay, thank you so much.
Sure, thank you. Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
All right, next we're going to go over to Ms. Danicola.
Tonight I'll be just going over the 2022-23 proposed final budget. There has been no changes since the passing of the proposed final budget. Budgeted expenditures remain at 137, excuse me, $137,85,784. These expenditures will support over 6,000 students. 66% of the budget is related to salaries and benefits. 24% is related to contracted and purchased services. 4% is related to supplies, and 6% is related to debt service and other obligations. Budgeted revenues remain at $134,247,500. That accounts for 68% of the total revenue. It includes a real estate tax mill rate of 29.917 mils, which is a 3% increase over 2021-22. The estimated homestead/farmstead relief that will be available for taxpayers has increased. This year, the approximate amount is $176.60 that each approved homestead/farmstead will receive in tax relief. State revenue accounts for approximately 30%, and federal revenue accounts for 2%. I would tell you that based upon recent meetings regarding the state budget, that I would ask that everyone reach out to our legislative members, asking for their support of public education. The state has seen a growth in their revenue. They're far exceeding their estimates. So there appears to be money within the state budget to fund the latest governor's proposal, and I would ask that everyone reach out to their legislator and ask for that support. There have been no additional changes to the proposed final budget. As there is additional data from Harrisburg as to where the budget talks are going, we'll be sharing that as well. The final budget will be on the board agenda on the 28th for approval to meet the PDE deadline of June 30th.
I just want to make a statement to back up Ms. Danicola. There has been numbers we have in this state right now from the federal and the national COVID relief bill that's sitting there is $2.5 billion. This money has not been released yet, and even releasing just $500 million from, basically, no, it's a lot more than that, the 2.5 billion. But basically, there was reports that they were going to start releasing some of this to the education of each school district, and I saw numbers for O&amp;J. This was more out of Chester County. O&amp;J was getting almost $14 million, and some of the other schools further down were getting up to $20 million based on the amount of students. So if we can put a lot of, you know, force behind our legislators, they're aware of this money sitting there, they're calling it a rainy day fund. I don't know how much more they want as a tsunami river or wall or whatever, but we could use the money now. And, you know, they're trying to, like I said, the state's trying to hold it to their chest, but we have, the legislature has to know that this has got to be given to our children. So there is money out there for us, and we do not want to raise the taxes, and we want to supply all these programs that we have at this school district with no questions asked. But we have to, as a group, as a community, put the screws, the best way I can put it and say it, to our legislators. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hemingway. Yeah, so to kind of follow up on what Mr. Zawada was saying, I agree, we need to reach out to our legislators. The governor's proposed budget would, I believe it's allocate an additional $3.36 million to Boyer Town. That's a lot of money. And, you know, we are one of the, we fund our education, we're like 45th in education funding in the country, meaning that there's like five states that fund lower than we do, which is, which is pretty horrible. And our system of heavily relying on property taxes also, you know, hurts homeowners, property owners of all kinds. So these are all things that we should really be aware of and be advocating for at the state level, because these are not things that your school board directors can fix. We just don't have the authority to do so. So then I have a few questions about the budget. Like, will we be seeing a five-year projection? So do you want me just to, you can answer as I go? Is that easier? Or do you want me to put them all out?
You can put them all out.
Okay. Will we be seeing a five-year projection? I'd like to see the increases in revenues at 4.2 and 3.5 without the adjusted, estimated collectibility. And then if you could also apply like the homestead/farmstead savings to those, because that is, that 25% increase is definitely helpful. And then I just wanted to talk just for a moment about the Act One. So like the Act One is based on wages and costs, so it's basically tied to inflation. My concern with our current budget and, is that the Act One is designed to help districts maintain, not expand their offerings. Going below the Act One means that we must try to do the same thing with less money. We can only trim so much, and we've been trimming, trimming, trimming. I don't know that there's much left to cut without seriously impacting programs and education. So how will we sustain growth with less than we need to cover our operating costs, which is why I really would like to see that five-year projection? So, thanks.
Well, that information I can push out to the board in the future.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have you figured out what the homestead money, the homestead money back to the individuals would actually be? What is the criteria for that?
So the criteria is determined, they have to basically, the easiest way to explain it is, it has to be their homestead. They have to live in that property.
Right.
The relief from the state has greatly increased, so it's been averaging around $140-some dollars in relief for '22-'23. It's estimated at $176.
Yeah, well, what's, what's the, the criteria for that would be like, your income? What is the?
There's no income requirement.
There's no income on that?
Property requirement, usage of the property.
Okay. Thank you.
And there is a deadline to have that.
Yes, there is.
Mr. Ruff.
You might also want to say you can only do one. And that you can't, if you rent the property out, you can't apply for it. And it's only one where you actually reside.
To that point, we are working with both Burks and Montgomery County. We correlate our real estate tax data against our census data that we collect in our annual census mailing. When we see properties that have indicated on census that it, there's, it's a rental property, we are cross-referencing that against Montgomery and Burks County real estate tax records and are working with the accounting to address potential duplication of receiving that homestead/farmstead exemption. That won't bring additional revenue to the district, but it will provide additional relief back to the taxpayers should those properties be removed as homestead/farmstead eligible.
Back to that homestead, I do want to let people know that due to Ms. Danicola, she has found significant amount of properties on her own. We're talking, I believe it was close to 20 properties that people were beating the system. So there's probably well over $100,000 that she brought back to the coffers for our school district, so she should be commended for that. I know as far as, I think, Roger, it's similar to Clean and Green, Farm Preservations, that type of properties that would qualify for that kind of money. It's not just somebody living in a townhouse or something like that.
Okay, you know, I'm concerned about the budget, but I'm also concerned about our students, especially our elementary students as we go past these past two years, and their ability to learn. Is there any way we can use some of the ESER funds to keep some of the teachers?
We are.
Or to not, not fill 25?
We are constantly evaluating the student size, size of our classes as an administration. We do know that as we have non-teaching resignations, we will be looking to see what are the additional resources we can place into buildings to mitigate any class size issues. But that's something that's an ongoing analysis as, right now, we don't really know what our kindergarten registrations will be, and we know that it's an ever-fluctuating number. But it is something that we are having weekly conversations to figure out ways we can push that additional resource in.
I mean, I'm just concerned with our second, third grade, fourth grade, our elementary kids. I mean, we need to keep the class size down as much as possible. So if we could use some of the ESER fund money to use, you know, get a teacher, I would be all for that because these are critical years for these kids, and two years of missing, I mean, okay, not every student's behind. I understand that. But if we have one student that's behind, that's one too many, and I know there's more than that. So I'm concerned of that.
I'd like to make a comment on that issue, and obviously, I don't want to usurp the administration's role in determining on how the ESER funds are going to be utilized. But the vast majority of school districts in the United States have been reluctant to use ESER funds to engage professional staff because that's a reoccurring expenditure. So, for example, while it might get us through this budget year and next budget year, once the ESER funds disappear, we don't have the right to just eliminate our faculty under the circumstances, and a budgetary cliff or structural deficit will be created as the result of using one-time money to pay a reoccurring expenditure. So that's one of the challenges to address the utilization of ESER funds. And I don't know if the administration has any thoughts on that issue, but the vast majority of school districts have been loath to use ESER funds, even though the numbers are huge in terms of their initial basis. But once those funds are gone, then the district has to assume the cost of paying those. those additionally created positions, and it creates a funding shortfall for the district. So, um, I just wanted to mention that.
Okay, I understand that. And any of our schools in our second, third, fourth grade that are below the 25 mark that we could, and I, I hate to do that, but... So as Ms. Danicola shared, um, the administration has met, has, has been reviewing our numbers. Our numbers will continue to go up, will come down. We are meeting bi-weekly to continue to watch those numbers. We do, um, know that in the event that the class sizes would be staying at, you know, say, 27 within a third grade class, we're going to need to put a support into that room, whether it would be that we hire an LTS, um, for the duration of the year, or if we would put a, you know, certified teacher as a support through Kelly Surfaces, something, you know, that would support the instruction of those students. So we're, we're evaluating, and we will come back if we would have to hire, um, additional teachers. You know, we are watching those numbers. Um... Okay, in particular, um, one of the schools I'm looking at is Washington Elementary, which has 92 homes being built in Congo, which would be part of Washington, as far as I know. I don't know exactly when they're going to be ready, but if it's any time this school year, um...
Doesn't mean 92 kids, then.
I, I understand that. I'm not saying that.
That's easy, I'm just letting you know that.
A lot of times people get really upset when they see, you know, all this development going on.
You have 92 homes coming in, and you even have 30 students that could be elementary, or even 10. That could throw the whole, whole system off up there. So that, that's a concern. And the behavioral problems I'm hearing in some of the classrooms, all throughout the district. I mean, i- it's an issue, and it's a lot to do with the COVID. And we need to be able to address those issues for the parents.
For them.
For the parents, for the, for the teachers, for the bus drivers, for everybody that's out there. I mean, what are we gonna do?
I don't think I'm well-reserved at this point, but...
I, I understand your concern. It's a concern of our classroom teachers, it's a concern of our principals, it's a concern of educators across the, the, the United States. This is not, um, just to Boyertown area school district that's experiencing the impact of COVID and students coming back into, uh, structure and not, you know, ready for the structured environment. Um, you know, we're addressing situations as they're coming up, we're using, um, you know, restorative practices, we're being trained to, to help students, you know, think about what they're doing, getting themselves back into, you know, a good behavior mindset. Um, you know, counseling is, is something also that has, um, you know, come up that we need much more of. Um, many students are, you know, in desperate need of, of various supports. It's not just, you know, learning, it, it also has the emotionality of it. Um, we're, we're trying to take the funds that we are receiving and apply that to many of those areas, you know, to continue to support students. So it's not something that we're going to be able to fix in a day, a week, you know, maybe not even, you know, a school year, but it's something that we're continuing to work on. Um, and I don't disagree with you. We, we are definitely watching those class size numbers, it was a concern. I brought, um, my administration, excuse me, into my office today, um, and said, you know, where are we at? It's, it's June 14th, um, what does our projected enrollment look like? What do we need to start preparing for? So we're watching. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Hemingway. Uh, yeah, so, um, I just, I want to thank Ms. Nyman for bringing that up. I think, um, I think she has some really great points in that class sizes and you as well, Mrs. Torsia, that class sizes correlate, especially in the younger grades, there's lots of data to prove that class sizes correlate to achievement. Um, these are all, these are all budget concerns, um, at their root, because we cannot have smaller class sizes if we cannot hire additional teachers, we cannot hire additional teachers if we don't have the money to do it. Um, so if we want, if we want smaller class sizes, if we want, um, those things, we have to be willing, unfortunately, in the way that education is funded in Pennsylvania, we have to be willing to tax our residents at a higher rate. Um, so that's, that's the dilemma that we all face. Um, and then I just had one more question from Mrs. Danicola, which I did forget to ask, so I apologize. Um, right, the, the estimated collectibility, the adjusted for estimated collectibility, could you send me like data on, or on what that's based on, like how you figure that out? The data used to?
Yeah, the data was previously shared with the board, but I can show that again.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Uh, the ZURN track, one, the Phase One, it was just completed, they put 72 homes in there, and I only picked up 10 kids out of 72 homes.
Okay, so in the past, I've heard, uh, Mrs. Torsia and Mrs. Danicola talk about, we've trimmed, we've cut, we've done all this, but I can't see that because I have to agree with some, some things that have been said here today. I don't have any history on previous budgets, there's nothing that, I've seen budgets before, and they always show like a couple years, maybe 20 and 21, and then 22, here's where, what we're going for this year. But I don't have that, so it is hard for me to know where, where, where have we been in the past? And, um, so what type of things have we trimmed and cut for this budget? I guess that would be my question, if something you don't want to get into now, you can, you know, send it to me in an email, um, but that's what I would like to see, because I can't look at this budget for next year, and I know nothing of what was spent last year or the year before on these things, so I have nothing to judge anything by.
Well, we can prepare some additional information and send that out, that's not something I can answer tonight.
Okay, the other thing is we're also offering summer school to try to help some of the children catch up, and I don't think we mentioned that. Um, and as far as the class sizes, we had a maximum number for years, and I don't think we are over exceeding that number for sure. In fact, I think we're dumbing down a little bit on that number. Uh, the other thing was mentioned tonight that we cut programs, we did not cut programs. Thank you.
So just to, to address, um, one of the questions that Mrs. Scott had shared, you know, what have we cut? There, programs have not been cut. Um, in the 21, or the 2021 school year, um, there were furloughs done at the end of the 2020 school year, is when we furloughed. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Frederickson. Um, and that was where program was cut. At that time, the middle school language program was removed, okay? Two Spanish teachers were part of the furlough. So that was the only program that I can recollect, um, as I sat as the assistant superintendent. Um, in the past year, when we brought forward this 2122 school year budget, again, there weren't any programs that were impacted. In, in fact, we tried to, um, bring back a virtual, uh, language program at the middle school. The reason why it's not continuing for the 2223 school year is that it was virtual, it was one individual covering both, you know, uh, middle school east, middle school west. It did not receive very good, um, input to, um, Mr. Stout and the Office of Teaching and Learning, and it didn't, you know, approve, appear to be, um, as, uh, well-received or of what we expected. The reason why some students do not have a double ELLA is because completely of scheduling, and that has been taking place, and that would be eighth grade, in both middle school east and west. And that is because the, of the way the schedule has been built for four years perhaps, um, that classes have been doubled up, and in the past, they had that Spanish class to go to because that Spanish level was at both middle school east, middle school west. The result of 2019, having a deficit, had to make tough decisions, furloughs happened. We have not furloughed in the past two years, but we have not replaced every teacher as well through attrition.
I, I'm not necessarily saying that it's classes that you're cutting, you could be cutting in other places, I just don't know what they are.
And we will try to summarize what has occurred in, you know, the, the past three years to, to give you an idea.
That would be very helpful, really, as a new person on the board that comes in and has no information.
And with a brand-new administration in different positions, we have to, especially, you know, within our business office, it'll, it'll, you know, take a little bit, and we'll see what we can gather for you. For all of you, actually, not sharing it just with one, but for all nine.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Just one real quick, with the AP classes, um, and we're putting this, the number of 20 on there. Um, and then we said last year, we didn't hit those numbers, and that's why the classes were, you know, taken down, we didn't have enough people sign up. I was just wondering possibly, uh, you know, the last few years has been an anomaly, so it's, to me, it's hard to say, because everything was different. Have we researched basically back two, three years ago to those same classes and seen how many people had signed up? Maybe people just didn't sign up because of COVID and not being in school per se, where they're working on a computer instead and working from home, and they didn't understand what the classes are instead of, again, it's just my idea, giving you an idea, it's not a, you know, a complaint, but, you know, too many things we can't base on the last two years. We just can't, because hopefully God says it doesn't happen again, but, you know, we did have AP courses, we had business courses before, that these students, we do have a ton of students that advance in this school. If you went to graduation, and we saw all the honor and high honor students, and, you know, the way they get there is because of our, our studies, and we can't forget about them. And it is important when you go into, none of these kids should have to go into, do reading, reading all English or math when they go into college. You know, we used to call it English 90 and Math 90. Um, so, and, you know, and be proud, we as a school board should not be proud if our students are going to a college and have to take, you know, remedial math. But, um, we, like I said, we seemed, uh, just by graduation, it's my first year, but we seem to have the, the kids are smart, and, um, we just have to give them, you know, I know it's hard to cut programs, but they come for an education, and yes, everything is an education, music is education, sports are an education. You know, it's the circle of life, you learn from that. But ultimately, our job as a board and as, uh, a school district is to teach, so, and I'm su, I know you guys are working on this, I know the finance committee's working on this, um, we just need to kind of maybe explain it better to the community as to some of us on the board, you know? But that, again, just a suggestion, go, forget about the last two years if we can.
Well, thank you, Mr. Zawada, for that, um, question. So just so everyone does know that we do, the high school offers 21 AP offerings. So we have AP Biology, Calculus, um, AB, AP Calculus BC, AP Chemistry, AP Computer Science, AP European History, Language and Composition, Literature and Composition, Music Theory, Physics I, AP Research, AP Seminar, AP Statistics, AP Studio Art, AP US Government, AP Comparative Government, AP Economics, AP Environmental Science, AP Physics C, AP Psychology, AP US History, and AP Human Geography. And many of those AP classes, um, have multiple classes, meaning that, you know, this may run Period I and Period II, um, because there is enough interest in those classes to where they run more than just one class, um, you know, per, per day, et cetera. So the three classes that have been brought to the board's attention just did not meet the threshold, and the experience that our high school administration have had in the past is that if they have 15 sign up, um, typically 15 don't stay within that class. And so now that class is now dropped down to, um, 12 or, or 10. And that is the, the history that they have had, and that's the numbers that they do go back and look at. One of the classes hasn't had enough interest to run, but they continue to offer it, hoping that more students would become interested so that we have the opportunity to run it. Also, you have to have a specific credential, uh, to be able to teach AP class. It's not like we can put it on any one's schedule, not just any teacher, um, with a biology credential can necessarily teach an AP class. Um, you have to take class to teach class. Um, so I just wanted everyone to know that we do have a very robust offering, and it's, you know, unfortunate that a few of the classes did not gain the, um, you know, student interest. And so my question went back to the administration, well then, what did we do? And they're, they were running our academic classes that are at 25, 27, 28 students within those classes, and if they were to, you know, say, well, we're going to take that class back and push those students into others, then, you know, some of our other learners who, you know, um, are, aren't as academically gifted, you know, struggle within those larger settings. So it's tough decisions, it's not not having, um, the, the course or offering every year, it's a part of the program, a study, every year, students are, are shared that this class may not run. If there's not enough interest, it may not run. So, um, that, that's what we have done, Mr. Zawada. I hope I answered some of your questions, and, and the high school has been definitely, you know, utilizing, um, last, you know, prior year's information for sure. All right? Uh, in addition to that, I also wanted to, you know, let everyone know that in addition to the AP classes, you know, the dual enrollment, we have, um, dual enrollment for business, for education, English Comp 1 and 2, Family Consumer Science, Health and Phys Ed, uh, Biology, Honors Environmental Science, Environmental Science, Ocean World, there, I, I can just keep going on and bore you all with all the, the titles. So there, there is a lot of opportunity for students who are at that top level to be engaged in some enrichment and enriching, um, courses, so.
Thank you, Mr. Hemingway. So, um, just one question, one thought. So about the dual enrollment, um, it is my understanding that if you do not have a high school degree, then you're not FAFSA eligible, so you're not eligible for a Pell Grant, meaning students who come from low-income circumstances, like are we work, do we have a program where we work with the community college to discount these kids so that they can access them as well?
I will have to get back to you with that answer.
Sorry, yeah, it's a complicated one, I understand. Um, yeah, because that's my understanding, that you need to have a high school diploma in order to qualify for the Pell Grant. Um, so I just don't want to see any, any students being limited because of, you know, their family circumstance. Um, and then as far as the AP classes go, we need a minimum of 20 to run those, is that correct?
Yes, that, that is correct. That's, we're, we're using a minimum of 20 for all classes. So when we have, um, some classes that might not have that minimum, such as Art 1, 2, 3, up to 5, so there are times where those will be compacted together in one period, and a teacher may have minimal numbers for each of those, and so then therefore that continuation of that course, and I'm using art, there's other classes where there's continuation of that subject, would need to, to run. So that is something that the administration looks at, not this administration, but the high school administration as they're evaluating their schedules.
So just, uh, my concern with that is that I know with AP classes, um, you need to achieve certain, we'll call them benchmarks or whatever, to elect into those classes, not anyone can elect into them. So the population of students that can elect into AP classes is smaller, yet we're subjecting them to the same 20 minimum. Um, and I understand for budgetary concerns, you know, again, we go back to the budget, but, um, I don't know that that's quite, quite fair to our high-achieving students. So that's just my comment. Thank you, I appreciate it. I appreciate it.
Jeff, did you have another comment or question?
No, that's okay.
That you're good?
Yeah.
All right, everybody, let's move on. Ms. Torsha, if we could, I guess, go back to you about policy 006.
My pleasure. So pretty much we have policy 006 and 903 back under discussion. My understanding from our last board meeting and the review of these policies, the major concern that impacts both is with regard to when a public comment, someone from the public may sign up to be able to speak. This new policy, as reviewed by our solicitor's office and following new case law, is it, Mr. Sultanic?
It's the Pennsbury School District Civil Liberties Litigation.
Thank you. The recommendation was to have our public sign up in advance so that we would be able to properly vet them. So I don't need to review everything. One policy, policy 006 includes the new information with regard to the Sunshine Act. All of that changed language should remain. That wasn't under discussion. So what I need to know is who's going to vote for 24 hours or four hours in advance sign up? Or who is going to want the policy to just allow for public comment period for, to sign up as you come to the meeting? That's all the options that I have to give to you because that's really all that there is. We can change the hours. We can say 20 hours. We can say 10 hours, five hours, you know, four hours. If you want somebody in advance so that we would be able to go ahead and vet. Or, you know, the majority of the board can agree that they like how public comment is managed and we go there. So I don't believe there was any other discussion based upon these policies and the new language, you know, coming forward, other than that piece, which impacts both. Did I do a summary for all of you? Okay, great. So show of thumb, how many of you will be for whatever hour? Is it 24 or less? Is there anybody that wants to be signed up a day in advance or 24 hours? You know, so we have one, two, three.
Question, what did our solicitor have to say about that?
They, they were recommending 24 hours in advance of a meeting. And I suggested that, that's so that we would be able to properly vet, go through whatever process. I'm saying that if we allowed for a smaller increment before a meeting, that we would be able to, you know, move forward and vet unless there would be a huge situation that would be coming on and hundreds of people wanted to sign up, but only 10 would be able to sign up anyway.
I'm all for a solicitor's report on that.
Okay. So, so then I guess again, the policy, the way that it was originally stated was 24 hours in advance. So how many for 24 hours in advance? One, two, three, four, five. So the policy would then pass with the way that it was presented with 24 hours. I would change it from four hours back to 24 and I would put it on for a first reading. And that would impact then policy 903 as well.
Okay, you're only posting it Monday at noon, so that gives them only till 7 o'clock Monday night. I can't accept that. That's, people sometimes aren't even home by then yet.
I was actually going to bring up the same concern that Ms. Nyman brought up. What time was our budget posted on Monday this week? Does anyone know?
I do not. I, I.
There's been a lot of work on the website this week. It's been completely revamped, so I have no idea. We don't, nobody here posts on that.
And there were some other things that were going on that had delayed the...
So what if in the future we have issues with the website and things are delayed? People are just not going to be able to sign up or they're going to have a very, very small window? It seems very restrictive and unfair to our public, who we are accountable to. That's all for me.
Yeah, I don't know why we're not keeping it the way it is. And that's ridiculous, expect parents to come home and, and get here to the 24 hours prior to the meeting? We're really restricting free speech and as elected officials, well, that's one thing we should never do.
Would we be willing to drop it back to like noon of the day or 10 o'clock of the day of? And by the way, it is not restricting of free speech. And that's, that's, that's a, that's a, that's a smoke argument.
It deters people from being able to sign up. So it is, it does restrict.
No, it doesn't. We can agree, we can agree, we can agree to disagree on.
So essentially it's giving people six hours, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's why I'm saying, we want to move it. Would the five people that, that passed it be willing to move the time to Tuesday? Of course, administration-wise, could you handle that and do what needs to be done? Say if we give it to you at noon, if, you know, go till noon of the day?
I thought four was the second thing. If that's what you wanted to go with, that seems way more reasonable.
Well, I'm saying, I'm saying it's like seven hours, noon is seven hours.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Four hours is even better.
I don't know if that gives them enough time. That's why, because that's getting toward the end of their day too. So that's why I'm saying noon.
Well, I look at it too, it's a way for the administration or even the board leadership to prepare. If you, if we're getting an over, abundance of responses, really want to talk, okay, then that gives us the option, you know. We've always, over the last two years, kept hearing about change venue, change venue. Here we change venue and we ended up with, you know, a handful of people. But if we actually have a commitment from, from the public saying, okay, we're definitely going to be there, okay, then it gives us a little more option. Now, everybody has had the opportunity to speak in my tenure on this board and we want to make sure that continues. So by having a heads up, we might need more security. I don't know what's going to be down the line, but any, any available time that we can give administration or the board, our security or IT, it's not just about vetting from, from my standpoint. It's about preparation so that we have a proper meeting that's fair to the public and also fair to the board. So I, I agree. You know, if we did seven hours or four hours, but definitely some, some kind of fair notice beforehand.
Would 12 o'clock be acceptable to the administration? That's my question.
12 o'clock's fine. 1 o'clock would be, you know, fine if that gave a little bit more latitude. 3 o'clock is something I put out. It would be tight. I know that it would put extra pressure.
And Mrs. Kramer has to do a lot of work now, so I wouldn't want to put any additional strain orders. So I would.
Say 1 o'clock?
I would, with the five, with the five that said yes, go for 1 o'clock.
So, thank you, Mr. Hemingway. When we say, just for purposes of transparency, when we say do what needs to be done, what is it that we're doing and what is the process of that?
I, I'm saying vetted is the word that I was utilizing.
How are we vetting people?
We're confirming, we're confirming that they're residents of the school district.
How are we doing that?
By utilizing our resources here within the school district.
So that would, but that would also be like people who own businesses in the school district are welcome to come and comment, correct?
They would have to be homeowners.
I'm sorry?
They would have to be, you know, taxpayers to the school.
Correct, yes, any taxpayer, anyone.
Mr. Chair, I'd have to, we've already voted this. Why are we debating?
We have not, we have not voted this.
Yes, we have, we have five votes.
We did not take a vote.
We just did.
No, we did not. There was no motion, there was no vote.
We had a consensus of, of the direction.
Yeah, we have a consensus, but no vote.
And from what I'm seeing, we do have a consensus of board that would be...
You can call for the vote, but it's very unfortunate to the people of this school district who deserve to be able to come to the meetings and speak their piece. I'm very, very disappointed.
I'm sorry you're disappointed, but they can sign up ahead of time. They're more welcome to come and speak and say anything they want.
This is for both speaking periods? I'm sorry, we're having two?
Presently, there's two at the, at this meeting, at the, at the regular vote meeting and one at the, at the committee meeting, like at this meeting. I'll address that after we're done with this vote.
Okay. So this is only for the first session?
This is for both, but I'll, I'll address the public speaking numbers after this, after this vote's done.
So it's for both? So if they want to speak at one or two, it's how many hours?
That's correct. Thank you.
I have a legal question. Yeah. So I have a legal question. So what would happen? I don't understand what the processes of vetting people. So what would happen if we mistakenly denied someone a right to come and speak? What, like what could, what would the accountability for that be?
It's an interesting question. I don't, sorry.
First of all, the question's been called, but I'll answer the question quickly. I don't believe that there's a huge consequence on the, on our part. There's no monetary damage as a result of that. And the right to speak at a public meeting is not a constitutional right. It's just a statutory right that's given under the school code. I think at best somebody could try to bring in action in court to prevent the proposed action from being implemented, which is the same avenue of relief that has afforded somebody if there's a sunshine law violation. So that would be the extent to it, but there would be no monetary damages.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, I did hear that. We were asking for, Ms. Dieroff called for the vote. Now, basically, we're not doing an official vote. We're just doing a thumbs up to get the direction. Go ahead, Mr..
There's one thing I like that I think at this point, since we're going, we're moving forward this way, that I would like to add, and that would have to be also into the thing that, I would like to add that we would have the second speaking period at the committee meetings also. So to accommodate the fact that somebody can't just go into the second meet, the second one there and wouldn't have, only have to wait to the next meeting instead of the next month. So I think that would be a fair compromise. Does anybody have a disagreement with that?
I have a question.
You revoted against it already.
No, 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 I just have a question about when the second speaking, when will that be, when will that happen?
When all the changes are in.
So we've drafted policy?
When the policy is passed.
Okay.
Everything would go when the policy is passed.
It will be included in there that there'll be two?
Yes, that's, that's, that's the plan here is that we would, we would put in the speaking, the sign up in advance portion of it. And at the same time, we would then extend to a second speaking time at the committee meetings.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay?
Yeah, thanks, I appreciate it.
So what, so what we've done tonight is we're giving Ms. Torsha direction to put, to put forward for the first reading, which will be presented, I guess, at the next meeting.
Right.
Okay, so let's just do another, she called for a vote a while ago. I apologize. Just a quick thumbs up.
25 hours notice.
25, 25 and a half hours notice.
This is one in the afternoon notice, two public speaking periods in each meeting.
Okay, I, I think that, I think you have, it's a consensus that the majority are, are asking that you move in that direction. Thank you, Ms. Torsha.
Absolutely. All right.
Your notes might be a little confused.
I think I got it. I was following the, the bouncing ball. Wasn't that what we, all right. So next up is the superintendent's consent agenda. And tonight I will be looking for the board of school directors to approve the 2022, 2023 Bash School Musical, Grease, and the proposed budget, approve of the creation of a student activity account for graduation. Just to give a little bit of background on this account, this account is set up and is, is going to be utilizing donation, donated funds to go into this count to support any student who struggles with any responsibilities with purchasing cap and gown, to help them get yearbook, anything that a typical student, graduating student would be able to have if they didn't have financial constraints. So that's the purpose of that activity account. I am also going to be looking for the, yeah, board of school directors to accept the Pottstown Area Health and Wellness Foundation 12-month grant award in the amount of $80,000 and to support the second reading and approval of policies 005, 008, 218, 220, 227, and 237. I do want to let you know that in policy 237, upon the review from our solicitor's office, a word was changed from May to shall. So that, that means that if a device is confiscated, it, it, I believe, instead of us saying May, our solicitor's office says shall is the better choice of words to use there. So that was the one change within that policy. So I'm looking for a motion.
Zawada moves.
I have a first from Mr. Zawada, a second from Mr. Updegrove, since it's a consent. We'll go right to a vote.
Ms. Nyman?
I'm abstaining at this point.
Would you share with us what your abstention is?
I have a concern on the grant award.
It's not an abstention on the basis of your conflict of interest.
No.
Okay. It's the equivalent of a no vote, right?
Mr. Panarelo?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next we have under the superintendent's itemized agenda is that the board of school directors approve adopting the addition of a girls' wrestling program beginning with the 22, 23 school year. Just so that the board understands that if we only have the interest of, you know, say one to five girls, you know, we are not going to be going out and hiring a coaches and assistant coaches. They would be working under the coaches that we would have in place for the boys. As the numbers would, you know, rise, then that would warrant us bringing in coaches into place. So depending on the numbers, you know, will dictate the number of coaches that would be needed.
I just have a quick comment. Basically, I think at this time, for all the other things that we're trying to find money for, I think that at this point, I understand what you just said, Ms. Torsha, but personally, I, to cut an IP course or to change anything else, to put in a sport that at this point, right now, the girls are allowed to wrestle with the guys. And I know it's not the perfect situation, but we're also in a situation, it's not even in our, our high school league yet. So that was my concern, so.
Ms. Dieroff, were you going to make a motion or you had a comment?
I have a comment.
No motion?
No, not right now. I feel the same way he did. Mr. Zawada just said, but did you say up to five girls, they would be taught or be under the current coach for the boys?
I utilize that number of, you know, one to five, that they would be able to be supported under that current coach. And speaking to Mr. Palladino, you know, we're not looking to add coaches if there is not interest there and not a numerical number of students that would warrant that coach. So yes, we were looking at at least one to five students and then more than five to bring in a, a coach specifically for them.
Now, this would be for the entire senior high?
That would be for the entire senior high.
Okay, and what other costs may we be expecting? Because there, I see other places, like you're paying $200 to this school or $300 to that school. I'm not sure how it works. Plus equipment, what, what other expenses would we have?
So I believe that Mr. Palladino did review that with his presentation as far as what his budget would be, and I do not have that in front of me. I know that obviously they would need a uniform.
Singlets, he said, just singlets.
Singlets is, is pretty much what he was saying. I believe that the other costs would be associated or would be part of his current budget. And I believe that he also said that they were already participating in some tournaments and, but I'm not, I, I cannot recollect his full presentation.
My understanding, a lot of the, of those expense overlapped into the program that we already have.
I know, but.
I'm sure there's, there's always going to be additional costs.
Right.
And I was getting a question, but.
And he didn't give me that, those numbers the last time when I asked. He just said there'd be some things. I just like to know numbers.
Know what they are.
But I, I think it's, to me, it's a bad time to be asking for another sport when we have problems with our education programs currently, so, thank you.
All right, I know we're looking for a motion, but it seems they turned this into the comment period before. I have, I have a motion for, from Mr. Panarelo.
Hogan, second.
A second from Ms. Hogan now, since it's an itemized, if we have a question or comment, then it's more appropriate now. Go ahead, Ms. Nyman.
Okay, you say up to five before you get a coach. So from there on, assistant coach or whatever, what numbers are we looking at all the way around? coach or whatever, what numbers are we looking at, all the way around?
I wouldn't be able to speak specifically to that, Ms. Nyman. I'm not really sure what goes into coaching wrestling at all, let alone girls' wrestling. I know it's not my preferred sport. So I would have to consult and, and have some type of administrative regulation or something to go along with that to, you know, to help guide us.
Then maybe we could table this until we get all the information, so we all know what's going on.
Well, I, I still would like to have a motion to start a girls' wrestling team, knowing that, you know, as far as our Title IX numbers, that definitely will help to support our movement there. And, you know, with regard to, we know that a coach would be coming onboard at some point. It's, you know, how many students and show interest. So, you know, I'm throwing out the number five, there could be a wrestling coach listening out there saying, "Is she nuts?" You know, so I, I wanna say that we're accepting that there's a wrestling program, and minimally a, a coach will be coming along with it, along with a uniform. And it's going to be absorbed as part of the budget that Mr. Palladino has currently in place. It's not going to be exceeding what is in place for the 22-23 school year.
Go, go ahead, Lisa. We already have a first and a second, or any additional comments or questions? Go ahead, Lisa.
I have a quick comment. So I was just looking back at my notes, and Mr. Palladino had said that there are 38 teams in the state that have female wrestling at the high school level, and this is the fastest-growing collegiate sport. He had mentioned that this, this creates lots of opportunities for female students, especially collegiate opportunities. And when we were talking about the Title IX compliance, so I'm, this is just from my memory, I could be totally wrong. Yeah, yeah, that, but I mean, if we're, if we're found to be non-Titel IX compliant, can't we, we can lose funding, correct?
In terms of Title IX funding?
Right. Like, if we're non-compliant, we can end up losing funding, right?
We could lose funding or have an action being brought by the Office of Civil Rights.
Right, which is.
Which is not a pleasant experience.
Yeah, 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 yeah. All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
So in other words, we've been non-compliant and losing money for the last 20 years because we haven't had girls wrestling?
No, I think if there's a, if there's a, an effort to have that balance, that it's, it's understood, it's if that balance is so far off, and then, then it's within question. Go ahead, Lisa.
I do believe we went under a Title IX review a few years ago, and we were found to have needed to kind of even balance, yes.
I think we did a self-audit, but I don't believe it was an external OCR audit. I believe we did with Peggy, Penny Packer.
Yeah.
Who happens to be a board member at the Upper Perkyomen School District, did an analysis for us, and did a self-analysis, which you should be doing periodically for your act, I mean, your Title IX compliance.
How periodically? Like, when you say periodically?
At least every five to 10 years.
Okay, so we're within that range.
We're probably within that range currently, but.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Go ahead, Ms. Dieroff.
I just wanna make sure I understood this. You said if and when we needed a coach and uniforms and all that, the money, it wouldn't cost anything extra, because the money's already in his budget. So my question there is, he must be having a lot of money left every year in his budget, then, if we can find a couple thousand, quite a few thousand dollars to pay coaches and uniforms and everything, maybe his budget's too large.
My understanding is that the uniforms and reviewing back over the presentation, they're looking to do fundraising, not for the coach payment, obviously that would be coming from our budget. Ms. D'Nacola, do you recall, I, I know that we didn't align money for wrestling, because it is not something that has been approved, but we do know that we would be able to cover an additional coach when and if we get to that point.
Yes, we would be looking to have some other savings within the athletic budget to make up for what the additional coaches would cost, should it come to that.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Brophy.
Well, at Boyer Town, we have a very robust boys' wrestling program. I mean, that's, that's obvious. I think for us to sit here and say we won't do any support for a girls' wrestling program is pretty hypocritical. There's, this could be a chance for girls to get scholarships to college that they won't get by participating with a boys' team. So I, I, I just don't see how we can say no to this. It's minimal cost. And once again, it's only trying to give the girls a chance, the girls' program a chance to start. We don't even know if there's gonna be enough interest to get a full team up, but I, I think we, the girls here deserve a chance to get that program started and move it forward. So I, I am, I am for supporting a girls' team.
All right, all right, Mr. Zawada?
All right, real quick, I appreciate what you said, Mr. Brophy. It didn't seem like we had this discussion before, and that's one of the reasons I wanted to bring it up again for the vote. If the guidelines are said what they're said and gonna be, then I would reverse and be in favor of it. So I just, again, I don't think it was explained properly the last time we voted on it, and I was more concerned right now where all this money was gonna come from, but if, it's already been budgeted, I'd like to look at it, but that's past that point at this point. But yeah, okay, I understand the importance for the girls. I'm not trying to take anything away from the ladies.
No, thanks, Mrs. Zawada. This is why we have this conversation, this is why we're talking about it now.
Thank you, Jeff. And Mr. Scott?
I just wanna add to that, too. I recall when the coach was here and they were making the presentation, and when I walked in, I was like, wrestling for girls, you know? But what sold me was the young lady that the coach brought, and she was so enthusiastic about it. She, I think she got a scholarship on it, so if that's available to our girls and we get enough girls, then, hey, go for it, that's my feeling.
Okay, fair enough. I'd like to go to a vote.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Is this on the girls' wrestling?
Yes, it is.
Yes. I'm sorry, I had to take.
That's okay. Motion carries.
All right, that's fantastic. Thank you, everyone.
Next we have on the superintendent's itemized agenda is to, for the board of school directors to approve the purchase of replacement Chromebooks. The administration recommends the board of school directors approve the purchase of 1,186 Chromebooks as replacement devices for grades two and nine.
Hogan motions, sorry.
All right, hold on. Mr. Panarello, I had a, with a first, and Mr. Updegrove, second. Questions, comments?
Question, um, do we have any idea how many books, Chromebooks have been returned, and what kind of condition they're in?
My understanding is, oh, I forgot, we have our IT director here. Mr. Feig, you get up there and answer that one.
Hi, very nice meeting all of you. We have had a very good turnout returning them. We only required the returning from grades 12, obviously, because they're expiring out of the district. And then we did some consolidation requirements to have us reassign the models specifically to try and create a four-year replenishment cycle. So to even out the, the models, to make sure that every student, every grade had the same model, we collected from grades eight, four, and five. So we have gotten all of, all of, I would say 95% of them coming back.
Do they have any value on the open market for, not necessarily schools, but, yeah, I mean, it's like a used vehicle, once it reached 200,000, it still has some kind of value.
Keep in mind, these are devices that come retail under $200. The license itself, the educational Google license, is 30, so a total cost right now of roughly $220. Once they're used by our school district, I would say that the resale value is pretty, pretty minimal.
Thank you.
These are just for grades two and nine, correct?
Correct. The, the idea moving forward will be do, again, create a four-year replenishment cycle. That way, the student would keep that same device from two, three, four, and five, return after the fifth grade, and receive. Now, we have enough inventory currently to sustain sixth grade, and those sixth graders will be able to keep that same model throughout the course of their entire middle school experience. The fourth year of a middle school Chromebook will become our loaner slash para slash long-term sub, our fluff, our extra inventory. So the, the cycle will be four years for every Chromebook device moving forward.
One more quick question. Is there a penalty if the Chromebook is lost or broken?
Yes, within our school district policy, if it is negligently damaged or lost or stolen, the cost of the device itself is on the ownership of the, the student slash family.
Thank you. Go to a vote. Thank you.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and next up, we have the approval of the overnight trip for our TSA students. So the purpose of this trip is for approximately 15 TSA students to travel to Grapevine, Texas on June 23 through July 1. Students will be networking, career-focused, college information, soft skills, opportunities during the national competition. We apologize for the lateness, this was sent to our attention late. We wanted to make sure that the students would be able to participate and attend this trip, so I am looking for the board of school directors to approve the overnight trip as presented.
Hemingway motions.
Hogan, second.
First from Hemingway, second from Ms. Hogan. Questions?
Real quick, real quick, cost, 'cause it's handwritten, so what's the cost to the school district?
I do not believe that there is any cost to the school district.
The cost for this trip will be paid for out of the TSA student activity account.
Okay, vote please.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And last, I am looking for the board of school directors to approve the personnel, personnel agenda as presented.
Zawada motions.
Can we have a first from Mr. Zawada, and a second from Mr. Updegrove? Any questions, comments? Go to a vote.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
That completes my report, Mr. Hemingway.
Okay, thank you. Let's just check in with their committee, committee liaisons. Lisa, anything going on at BCIU?
So I have a meeting this Thursday. I will send out, you know, the usual updates after the email to the board. That's all for now.
From my end, we, we met two Wednesdays ago for the BCTC. Of course, it was graduation time, it was a week prior to the graduation, they had many achievement awards, some of the families came to our board meeting, so they were celebrated. One noteworthy, I believe there's 19, is there 19 schools, school districts, 18?
Well, there's 17 that participate within the BCTC. Because Redding and Mule and York have their own.
Okay, and, and as far as the budget goes, everyone approved their budget, so that's good, good news for, for UTEC. So they're moving along in places impressive. If anyone ever gets the opportunity to participate in that program, do it. Curriculum and Student Services, anything going on?
No, nothing, no meetings.
Facilities?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, thank you. We just heard a budget update, but, Mr. Brophy, any comments? Okay. And policy, we spent plenty of time on that.
I just want to respond to one of the questions with regards to the dual enrollment. So I have people that are listening and are sending me information that we do have a program. It's already a discounted rate, because they're going through the high school, and we also do receive monies, or can utilize money through our Title IV funds to cover the cost of AP tests and dual enrollment costs for low-income students as, as requested. So there is funding there to support students who might not be able to.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, everybody, we're gonna move on to board comments. Start with Ms. Nyman, since your light's on, and then we'll just work our way around the table.
Okay, I'm still looking for the CAFER.
So the CAFER is no longer, the old version of CAFER, the audit, the, what we received from the auditors was shared in the last weekly update as an attachment.
Are we going to get a presentation from them, or?
That I'm trying to work with the audit team on, to get them out here. They're already, we're already working on the current year audit, so I'd like them to focus on this 21-22, so we can close it out when we, you know, close the fiscal year. So that's something I'm working with them on, to see what, what their availability would be.
Okay. Still waiting on my information for the appraisal of Pine Forge, and I guess I would like more information now, since we haven't gotten that. Looking to see what it's costing us since we closed Pine Forge to keep it open every Electric, having somebody go in there and check on it, 'cause I'm assuming somebody's going in there probably basically every day to check on it. So any cost associated with keeping that building right now. I'd like to see all that information, because it's costing us to keep that building sitting I'm looking for when we're gonna have a curriculum meeting, because I'm getting word that there's some books out there that I have concerns about, that are in our libraries, or possibly in our libraries, so I'd like to have that looked at. And I'm really disappointed about the public comment period. Maybe we should post the agenda on a Friday, so that parents have a chance to look at it, since you wanna keep them signed up earlier. That's just, it's not acceptable. One of my concerns is if a topic comes up that's not on the agenda, and we have to leave somebody talk, what's gonna happen then?
That is addressed in. That is addressed in the policy, that if there would be anything that would be brought from the floor and newly added to the agenda, that there would be an opportunity for public comment to be made right on the spot.
But how are we going to make sure they're?
We won't be able to.
So I'm still in favor of them signing up when they come to the meeting, because you just never know.
I believe we already took a vote and gave her directions.
Excuse me, this is my comment time, I'm allowed to talk.
Okay, well, you're just rebutting a vote that we just made, so let's move on, if we may.
I'm a little confused, we didn't vote on the policy, we, we consent, right, so we haven't voted on it yet, correct? Okay, I just wanted to.
For the board of Ms. Nyman, have some floor.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to clarify that, because I thought it was confusing, so I appreciate it. Sorry, Christine.
That's fine, I mean, we need to still vet this out, because I'm still concerned about it. I think signing up at the meeting should still be fine, as long as you use your municipality where you, where you live, that we were not asking for an address. And the statement there says, by living in this music, by living, okay, I live in Cobirdale. Christine Nyman signs up for, for the meeting, Cobirdale Township. By that, there should be something there that says.
By that, there should be something there that says, by me signing and saying, "I live in this municipality," I am saying, "I am a resident of the Boyertown Area School District." I should be able to do that yet. Otherwise, we're just gonna, something may come up at the first comment period that somebody says, and they may wanna talk at the second comment period, they're not gonna be allowed to, they're gonna be restricted. And as a public servant, we're here to hear everybody, whether we'd like it or not.
Yeah, so I just wanted to congratulate Jared on his high school and associate's degrees, what an amazing accomplishment. And then I wanted to thank Mr. Zawada and congratulate Jaden for his accomplishment. West Point is tough to get into, I mean, that's, that's, that's some serious stuff. So thank you to Jaden for his service to our country. I feel sometimes that students who move on to the military aren't, don't always get the accolade they deserve. You know, the, the sacrifice that they're making should be acknowledged. So I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge any and all students that have elected to do, to do that work on behalf of all of us and on behalf of the country. So, and then, and that's all, really, so thank you.
Yeah, I'm a little disappointed about that, but you guys already got that for me, so I won't go into it. I do agree with Mrs. Nyman on the policy. I also would like to know when we're gonna schedule a curriculum committee meeting. I think that's something that a few of us here are concerned about and would like to see one scheduled. I'm not sure if there's a problem with that or if there's, if there's a reason why we haven't been, but, you know, that's all.
Ms. Dieroff, do you have a comment?
No, thank you.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes, real quick, I do wanna let people know that so many people say, "Well, you don't answer emails." A lot of times, we don't, but we are familiar with them, and we're looking into a lot of the concerns, especially on these courses, some other ways of possibly allowing to get these children the education that they need, whether it's through online courses, online colleges, especially if there's some kinda finance involved or money involved, at least they get credit for it, for their, for their future education, so... And we will be scheduling a curriculum committee very soon, and it will be publicly known well in advance, which is, there is a lot to be discussed on that, I do agree. Also, one of the things, speaking about military, if we've noticed a graduation and, you know, our color guard is ROTC, and the amount of students that graduated from ROTC, I don't know of many schools in this area that use it as well as Boyertown, and it is a good leaping step for those kids because it sets them up early with making them adults real quick. So again, thank you to Jared and thank you to Jaden. We have some special kids and some special teachers that make things happen no matter what. We can argue about a lot of things, but it is a special school district.
No comments?
Okay, Ms. Torsho?
Upcoming meetings are June 28, July 12, August 9, and August 23.
Before I look for a motion to adjourn, I just wanna make a comment, not in my comment period, but at the conclusion of the meeting, I'm just asking that if we have the room cleared right away, it is a late night, could you continue the video while the, the room is being emptied? Again, good conversation with everyone tonight, thank you, appreciate everyone's patience. Thank you for attending. Mr. Saltanik, as always, thank you very much. Ms. Torsho, thank you. With that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Zawada motion.
I have Ms. Nyman and a second from Mr. Zawada. Meeting adjourned, thank you.